When we talk about trails, we like to say that we're not just building trails. We are cultivating a local economy. When we really got into this business of doing trails, it took us some time to really realize the full scope of what this can bring to a community. And when we are in a community building the trails, we are looking at three very unique things with the trails being kind of at the top of the tripod there. Economic development, tourism, and entrepreneur growth. In particular, we are through the trail program trying to really focus on the businesses, help them be more sustainable, get the word out about what they're doing, and at the same time try to see that wealth stay within your community. Bring the visitors here and keep the dollars here. This is basically what we do, a snapshot. A lot of people wonder with our name having the word artisan in it, what that means. We represent the whole artisan industry in the state of Virginia, which is made up of not only creatives, as you hear the word art, but it also includes your agricultural artisans that are out there. And our primary goal threefold is really looking at how we can foster economic growth, create vibrant communities as we're doing this, and then facilitate all those connected visitor experiences with the local businesses. So why artisan? I mean, there you can see some pictures of sort of the mix between the artists and the agriculture, which are the primary businesses in the program. But we look at this in a much broader context. Artisan culture in the state of Virginia really does link our past, present, and future, and it connects the meaning with the making. We've been able through this program to tell a story about a Virginia that is very unique from the dawn of our country and brought it forward here into these modern times. And I love this picture because without the Coopers who made the vans that went around the barrels, the woodworkers that were doing these things, farms would not have been able to survive. The crafts of our past, the quilts that kept us warm on the beds are now hanging on the walls in museums. And so we love to tell this story through the things that are being made across the state. Right now, our artisan trail program, just to give you a snapshot, there are 32 artisan trails in the state of Virginia. Fifteen of those are in that yellow region down there, southwest Virginia. They are facilitated by a sister organization of ours around the mountain. We don't have a lot to do with their individual trails, other than we scaffold them, umbrella over them where larger statewide initiatives are concerned. Within our program, there are 17. And then we also have the Virginia Oyster Trail, which is a synergistic trail that the governor asked us to create that's in alignment with the artisan trails, but then also with its primary focus on the coastal region, it wraps the entire state. So another reason why artisans, well, there is economic power in these small businesses. And these are the very small, micro type businesses, you might say, a lot of them. Some of them have grown and gotten into high production, wholesale, employee, you know, many peoples. And we like to start within that continuum with these small businesses and help them grow into what it is they aspire to grow to be, help them develop. This study was done in 2014. I did bring some copies, a little bit more, a handout here if you all want to take one. It'll give you a little bit more information. This is just a snapshot. We are right now, this year revisiting and getting ready to embark on the second follow-up to this study to see about our growth. But what we already know is we have tripled our membership and we have tripled our programming since this initial study in 2014. Really looking at how communities tell their story. We weave in that artisan flair. Everything that they're doing can be connected. It can be connected in, within those primary businesses, but also outside of that. For when visitors come, we want to make sure that they have places to eat, places to stay, and lots of things to do. Our process is very community-driven. We will be creating a, well, we already have created, I should say, an action team that's on the ground right now, helping to facilitate some of the understanding about the trail. But when we talk about a trail, all kinds of businesses can get involved with this. I know you can't see the yellow ones very good there, but we will wrap them all into the program in terms of the activities that they bring to your community, and they all fit within this artisan concept. Telling the story, getting the visitors here, giving them plenty to do. I think the statistic is for every hour that a visitor travels to get to a destination, they want four hours of things to do. So we weave it all together and leverage what you have going on in your community through the artisan trail. These are the basic types of businesses that the trail is outlined with. So artists' videos, agricultural, artisan, agritourism, craft or art-related venues, and then all the supporting type businesses, your lodging, restaurants, recreational, and cultural points of interest. And this could even include major events that you have going on in your community. The leadership team, we look for connections, everybody on that team representing a different avenue of your community. We love having someone who can be liaising with your government and economic development so that we can be looking at those different trends and things in your community and be helpful. Tourism, especially, definitely tourism because of the activities that go on on a trail. And then we want to have representatives to represent the actual trail sites themselves, those artists, those agricultural sites, venues that you have in your community. So again, the travel experience is key in the outward, visible, public sense of a trail. We will be hoping to educate your community so that this isn't just about trail sites telling their story, but it's about the whole community and the bragging rights that we want to give them, be proud of the trail, and really support those that are in the trail. But it's about that experience, memory, and skill. So we hope they'll bring their dollars here, take away a great memory, and send people back and come back time and again. Our process is very incremental. We do phase this out. I'll be taking the team through a timeline. I tend to be pretty nerdy. I know I have the artist ilk in my makeup, but I really do work with a team, back office, and we have different people that follow this process that gets us through the whole project management of the first initial development year so that we can start having fun once the trail's built and we inaugurate it. So we use, you know, project management. I know a lot of people in the room probably know what that's all about. We've got a great system of different tools that help us access this. These are just some of those tools that we integrate with on the backend, helping to get this off the ground. Primarily there, the one at the bottom, Basecamp, that's our virtual office. So everybody on your local team will have their own office where we communicate in between meetings, get things done, set tasks, set to-dos. It's a very active environment. And my whole team back at my office, they are all tapped in. So as needed, different people respond to what the team has going on. And then building partnerships. We've been very fortunate to carve out some wonderful partnerships across the state. Virginia Tourism is really our strongest. DHCD, they helped us pilot this program and have maintained a relationship with us. We've gotten entrepreneur grants from them, building collaborative community grants from them that we've facilitated in other trail regions, or that we've been a part of when those regions actually secure those types of grants. And then, of course, all the art organizations. American Craft Week, we are the facilitator of that for the state of Virginia. That's in October, and October happens to be Virginia Artisan Month, which we're very proud of having established a couple of years ago. And then the entrepreneur framework. This is something we're always mindful of as we come in to develop a trail. So the first, you know, the first goal is to get the trail developed, but as we're doing this, we're asking people questions, finding out what their needs are, and helping them try to get connected with resources in your community. Some of the businesses that we may meet with or learn about may be ones you know about and may be ones that you don't. They may be very, very small and just getting started, and we like to see them get that leg up. And so as we become more familiar in the community, our team will advise us on some of the best doors for them to walk through. We want everybody to be strong, so we focus on this. We also have a separate program that later can be, you know, accessed where we will do jumpstart your business classes, we'll work with local community colleges and the sort to do some of that kind of programming maybe down the road. What the trail sites get, and I know this is a little hard to see, but this is straight up our website. Every member, every business gets a profile. Every trail has their own website. So there will be, right now, you know, for the sake of name-holding, it'll be called the Warren County Artisan Trail. We will be taking your community through a naming process to actually brand the trail. It's part of helping them buy in on the trail, too. By getting them to help us name it, they learn all about it. So once the trail has its name, it will change online, but that then will become the URL, the website for your trail. And within that, every participant has their own page. It's all mobile responsive. It's tied to the Google Map system. They also, their login codes, they can put whatever they want on the page. It's like a demi-website. So some of your very, very smallest businesses that don't have their own website can use this as their portal. And then they get a login code to the calendar. And every trail has its own unique calendar, but every member knows or learns that if they put an item on the calendar, an activity, a dated activity, we will Facebook and tweet it for them through our vast network. So it's a great tool, bunch of tools that members will get when they come on the trail. And then collaborative events. Once the trail inaugurates, the first phase for about a year is building this trail, going through the different steps to get it there. Once it inaugurates, then the team has a lot of fun trying to decide what they want to do to draw attention to your region. They may pick a once-a-year event that they want to focus on. They may partner with another community. They might, Rappahannock County, your neighbor there, does Second Saturdays in Rappahannock County. That is becoming hugely popular now over there. They're getting a lot of traction with that. So we'll be listening and learning from your community to decide if this is going to be something that dovetails with something you already have going on, or whether the trail will evolve as something unique that brings a new activity to your community. An open-door tour where maybe for a whole weekend, everybody just opens their doors and we invite people to come. So again, mobile responsive searching, we get, you will all get locator signage for all the businesses. And then, of course, the social media engagement part in there, definitely Facebook, definitely Twitter, Instagram, the team wants to do it. We're ready to integrate and teach everybody how to get that Instagram going, but it does take a local conduit person to make that happen. And then those program synergies between the artisan trail program and the oyster trail program. The Virginia Oyster is a unique brand here in the state of Virginia, and it is open also to any business here in your community that qualifies for it. So a restaurant that's serving Virginia oysters, an artist that's creating, you know, oyster plates, that kind of thing, they can get on the trail, and the cost is seriously reduced. The trust synergy here is that we have a system, a really powerful database, that a person is on one trail, we can access them on the other trail. It's that same login code, whatever they put in the system goes on whichever website we point it to. So it saves them time not having to keep up with login codes. And then the cost is significantly lower to do two trails if they qualify and they want to do it. And then the program is really fundamentally based on a shared responsibility. Artisan Center of Virginia can guide through the process, develop it, provide all the back office services. We're a nonprofit, so if the trail gets donors and sponsors, we can provide them with the documentation that they need. But this is a shared responsibility with the community. We're looking for the team to be well-engaged, to get the trail sites engaged over time, and to have the support of all of those in your community, non-trail and others, especially your local governments behind this, so that we can really make this thing, and everybody feels supportive. And I'm sure you've seen this quote before. You know, "We bring them together, we will work hard, and try to create this progress that leads to the ultimate success." And we have a lot of fun. We try to infuse this in everything we do. Luncheon learns, Cippen learns, all kinds of events as that process, as we're developing the trail. We'll be getting people together on a very regular basis and trying to bond those relationships, create the engagement opportunities to get them networking and doing things together. And that is my quick version. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I wanted to whiz through that because I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight.
Yes. Joe, just, would Felicia be involved in this some?
Yeah, she would be spearheading on.
Any members of council have any questions? I'm sure you do. Gene?
The only, I only have a couple. Number one, I saw the brochure that Felicia gave me last week, which is some of these. And so if I'm a restaurant owner or whatever, then I have to page or have my advertisement placed on the these brochures that are being mailed or given away.
To be a member, yes. All the trail sites that would be featured in the print would, and I'll caveat that, some restaurants and some hotels that would be chains do not qualify as trail sites but can be sponsors. They can put a logo on, they can actually sponsor the trail. There's a role that we love connecting up with your larger properties in a region, and we'll make that fit. But the trail sites themselves, as we're telling the story, yes, they all have a membership level.
So what you do, this committee gets together, I guess Felicia or the rest of whoever's on the committee, plus your committee, and then you all are the ones that work up these brochures?
Oh, yes.
And puts them together. What does the actual restaurant entrepreneur, that shouldn't be said anyway, but anyway, that person who owns the restaurants and the entrepreneur does it, what does he have? Does he give you logos or things for his restaurant? Or do you all work it out?
We will give, every member will get their own login code. And they get that page where they can put their logos on there, login code. Did I say logo code? Login code. You can put your logo on there, your profile. We'll do featured stories, so once you're in there, you'll be featured in different parts of the website. We will do, there's a whole part of the website that's about itinerary building, where we will write out and do kind of itinerary suggestions. You can put your description up there. Anytime you have an event at your restaurant, you can put those activities on the calendar. We'll help push those out the door for you and support your marketing on those. So there's a lot of different benefits each member gets, whether you're a restaurant, an artist, everyone gets those same online benefits and those same marketing benefits. We see, even though the program is fundamentally focused on your creative and agricultural artisans, when the state first brought this program forward, those communities did not have a lot of connectivity in them, whereas the restaurants and the lodging had associations in they were. So it was a way to partner within the tourism framework to strengthen that whole story of the community. So the restaurants, we call you, you know, your cultural sites, your restaurants, but you're also supporting sites in that artisan fabric. And the best part is when a restaurant decides they want to hang some local art, then we can really draw some attention on that, or if you wanted to host a local event or something that focuses on that, then that can come to bear as well.
All right, the last question, $5,000 that you're requesting for the trail, then you call it seed money?
Yes.
Now, is that the only money that we're going to need to be provided for this particular trail?
George has probably been explaining how the budget works. There is a seed funding that comes in initially. There will be membership fees that come in to make up part of the budget, and then the team will also go looking for sponsorship fees to make up part of that budget as well. They will be stored in that budget. Right now, you're asking for $5,000 to get this thing going. The whole budget, on its whole, for a minimum performance budget for a trail, comes in around $30,000 when all of those pieces come together.
The reason I ask that, I mean, I don't want to make, I want to make sure that if we prove the $5,000, that this isn't an ongoing $5,000 next year and a year after, and a year after, and a year after.
I can't say that it is or it isn't right now at this point. To develop it, that is what he's asking for in subsequent years. Our goal is to get the trail being sustainable on its own.
Self-sustaining.
Self-sustaining. But anything can happen within a community, and we will be looking to your community dynamics to tell us when appropriate times to knock on doors would be. My hope would be that they won't need it. But again, when the whole community works together in that shared responsibility, I think the success of it with the $5,000 that you give right now means that there's a higher chance that there would not be an ask later.
Anyone else? Bill?
Okay, if I own a business, what is my fee as a member?
What's your business? What type?
I don't have one.
Return it. One of the gifts.
Well, I think in your packets, I did, the Manila packets, there is a schedule of the fees, but like an artisan, first year coming in, now, I've got to memorize all of this, see, I think it's $100 for the first year. But part of that is a setup fee that is a one-time setup fee. The renewal annually is $60 a year for that artisan business. So with the setup, they get their online portal set up, they get their sign, all of those kinds of things, but that's a one-time fee, and then it's 60. If they qualify to be on the oyster trail as well, then I think it's another $10 or $20 that's added on, and then they can be on two trails. But it's never, annually, in the renewal sense, it's right around 60, depending on the type of business. There are some businesses, restaurants, I think it's 100. Because again, we see them as supporting sites. They're coming into this as a supporter of the whole endeavor, the artisan endeavor.
I'm a firm believer in seed money to get organizations started, but you were kind of lacking in your statement about, well, if you can't judge the future.
Right.
Well, I'm not on the hook for another 15 or five next year. That's really a concern.
I'm hoping, again, I don't have a crystal ball. I really don't.
So you go out and recruit membership?
Yes. Oh, yes. Actively, very actively. And I'm very hard with my teams on this, too. We just had a meeting in the middle peninsula. I'll bring out a pie chart and I'll say, you know what, you don't have enough lodging on here. We can't get to the inauguration. So we will have goals. We will set goals, and all of that is, in effect, assisting this budget to grow, getting sponsorships. They will be charged with doing that as well. We will write a grant to Virginia Tourism to get a market leverage grant to help offset some of the marketing down the road. I always ask for at least $2,500 from Virginia Tourism, and then as the trail in future years does events, we'll keep asking for those events to try and cover their collateral, their print. We will do everything we can to try and make this sustainable, but a lot of the responsibility, too, is put on the communities to help us, the trail sites themselves and businesses. Yes, Felicia?
Can I just say, when you're applying to VTC, are you applying on behalf of the town or on behalf of the artisan trail?
On behalf of the trail.
Okay. Because the town will be looking at.
No, we don't compete with you.
Right. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
No, we know better.
Anyone else?
I may get you to sign mine as a partner, but I won't compete with you.
Anyone else? Joe, put it under council approval and next meeting. And gentlemen, how you want to word this? You want it seed money, or you want it as a first time, first ever? Any suggestions or motion on this? I know I've had some different conversations, and we want to support it, but we also don't want to get hung up on, are we going to have $5,000 every year or $10,000 every year?
Yeah. Where's that money at the budget right now? Is it in the tourism or what?
Yeah, for the FY19 budget. There's no current money right now, but in FY19 budget, it is in tourism.
Mr. Seba? I think Bill requested it be moved.
That's right. Bill had it requested to be removed to community development. Council, I'm not sure. Which one was it, council?
I think it's community development.
Where do we sign, BJ?
Community development, we'll just consider it.
For the artisan trail?
No, that was, that was for the Brock.
That was for Brock.
That was the block. Where do we sign to put that money?
It was, yeah, it was community development. My understanding was both would be.
Yeah, I'd like to see it both separated into what Bill was talking about, the Blue Ridge Art and the trail.
I understand.
You know, artists.
Well, we already did the Blue Ridge.
Oh, no. That's what I'm saying, but I'd like to see it together in the budget.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
I mean, it may be separated, but I'd rather for it not to be in the actual tourism portion of it. The money, that money would come out of her budget, but that money would stay in a separate account and then brought forward at the time it's, they need the money if we agreed it, $5,000.
As you said, money.
Yes.
And, you know, we're really granting funds, it's not really supporting this tourist side.
Sure.
It is, and it is.
Yeah, it is, but yeah, I know what you're trying to understand. George, have you had any correspondence with the county on this yet for their?
I've talked to them several times, and I've taken the same information you have that everyone's gotten, and all the indications I've gotten have been positive.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sherri.
Are we good?
Yes.
Happy to answer questions later if you just need them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Warren Memorial Hospital Valley Health, conditional rezoning application, director of planning and zoning. Jeremy, I guess, Jeremy, to start out with, in our last meeting, just to bring everybody up to par, there were some questions asked about the sewer service, electric service, water service, and the signalization. Gene, you've read the sewer, electric, and water. Are you pretty much satisfied? I know Joe is okay with it.
Well, the thing is, on the sewer, with me, we haven't got an evening for the sewer lines on the school yet, so it's not our line.
Well, they'll be coming on existing sewer lines.
But that's four of them screwed.
Yes, we do.
Do you have a name? Okay, I recall we didn't.
No, we did.
And the only other problem that I have, unless you want to continue on?
No, I'm just asking about the electric, water, and sewer, of course. Why give it a signalization?
No, I don't have a problem.
Okay. Jeremy, we're good with the electric, water, and sewer. Let's elaborate on the traffic signalization.
So there were two things, two talking points about the main entrance at the last meeting, you know, the traffic signalization. The first of those was, we wanted to see if the hospital would just pay 100% regardless of what the cost is, instead of $300,000. Of course, we had, our energy services department had estimated on today's dollar value, it could be up to $280,000 for a traffic signal there. So $300,000 may be enough today, but I guess there's a lot of question, would it be enough in five years from now or whenever it was built? And so the hospital, we met with the hospital on March the 13th over that issue, as well as the timing issue for the signal itself, and had requested that they do just that, that they consider putting language in there to pay 100% and to build the signal upfront. The hospital came back and submitted in the revised proppers. They do have language where they would pay for 100% of the traffic signal. And as I said in my report, though, there's a caveat. They had concerns over escalating design cost, and so there's language in there that says they would pay 100% of whatever is required, and if there's anything that we're requesting above and beyond what's required by the town and BDOT standards, then that would be something we would pay for. And they did not change the timing, so it's still between zero and five years. The hospital wanted the flexibility of being able to install it within that timeframe rather than having to build it upfront.
What's the reasoning for five years? I mean...
Well, the way the hospital explained it to us is that they want that flexibility because it may not be needed upfront. They wanted the flexibility of being able to work it in within the first five years of the hospital.
I spoke with Joe outside. Joe, would you like to elaborate on when the hospital would move forward?
With traffic count today, even with the hospital going in into 2020, when its support doesn't require a light to be placed there, I believe in the study, so we wouldn't want to wait until traffic generated, if enough traffic generated to cause a light to be installed.
Why wouldn't you go ahead and get the infrastructure in while you're building, even if you don't activate?
It's already there. The infrastructure's already, the conduit under Leach Run is there, so we wouldn't be tearing up any asphalt or anything like that, if I'm correct. So the hard part's done is the work under Leach Run.
I guess, Bill, speaking with gentlemen, Mark, it was, it's not a money thing, it's not a...
I was going to say, this is a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, it is, and I guess they just feel that in their site project and moving forward that when the traffic trips the need, then they would go ahead and install, which would take maybe, maybe three months. Gene, is that typically what it takes?
I don't know. There's questions that in that last statement on the update, I don't agree with, because number one is, you say a traffic study. Traffic studies complete.
Yes.
So that means somebody's going to do another traffic study and say, when is the time is right to put it in? Or who makes that decision? Is it one year, two years, five years? And I'd just like to know when, to some degree, other than just saying, oh, it's going to be done in five years' time.
The intent of that, Mr. G. Walt, was that when you, when the town requests a traffic study to be done, and that traffic study... study to be done, and that traffic study is done by the hospital, which they agreed to, and traffic study calls the trips, I mean, if there's enough trips, we'll put the light in at that point. So it's not really zero to five we get to choose. You pull the trigger and says, we think there's enough traffic there, please do the study. We'll do the study. If there's enough trips, then we have so many months to design it and build it. So it's not really a zero to five, just whenever we want to do it, is that when the trips are generated.
Well, that's where, that's where I missed it. I mean, the way this proffer's written, it just says zero to five. It doesn't say when the traffic.
Clear that up.
We need some wording in there to clear that up in order to say, when the town says, okay, I think it's time, that we have that option. The second thing I don't like in this, in this thing is, it says the applicant will pay only the costs that are necessary to meet the minimal requirements. I just don't care for the word minimal in there. I don't think, it should be whatever is required at the time it's installed.
And I think that's what it was.
I know, but words play a big, big issue here to me.
And I don't think anybody had any problem removing one.
I'd like to see that statement made to something that whatever the technology brings forward or something to that effect, at the time of installation, that they meet all the high-tech apparatus and whatever that's necessary, that's, that meets VDOT and the town's standards. I'm not saying going overboard, I'm saying meets VDOT standards. Also, there's another issue. I know that some new hospitals are installing sections on new traffic signals that when an alarm goes off, like a sirens coming up the road, that they go on automatically to allow all the traffic to be almost stopped so they can make their enters or exit from the hospital. I mean, I don't know if you all got any like that bill, but I know in some of the, some of the major hospitals, they do have those type of lighting. And I want to make sure that we're not stuck with an issue that down the road, oh, we need this now, the town has paper.
That's really not the intent of the language. I mean, we can remove the word minimal. The intent is for us to design and install a traffic signal that meets the town's and VDOT's requirements.
To install it.
What we don't want to fund is any sort of an elaborate add-on, if you will, that maybe somebody comes back and says, you know, we'd like to have a bunch of high-tech cameras or whatever.
I understand, I understand. I want to take you, I understand, too, that if the state says, oh, if the traffic signal on the hospital has got to have this particular parthenalia in the time that you install it. To me, that's the state requirement and the VDOT. So that would be required for that to be installed at that particular time.
Sure.
I believe that would probably be the all-traffic traffic signal.
Bill, pardon? VDOT, to meet VDOT requirements, is that the language you're looking for there?
Well, yeah, the town and VDOT, yes. You know, we are the actual owner. VDOT, it just gives us the specifications as to what they need on their highways that they pay our maintenance fees on.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Jeremy, can you piece together some type of motion? Joe, somebody piece together a motion to get rid of the language that Mr. Tewalt doesn't like and add the language that appropriate.
We can work with the hospital, yeah, really. Make a motion or require that we can.
Well, that's why we should just work with them. Get a motion for us so we can move forward next month.
Yes, sir.
Paul's for you. I like, I want to see that in writing before I make, we make a motion approved.
It'll be there before you make.
I want to make sure it's there Monday, if it comes up to our public hearing.
That's when we do our first reading. John?
This, this needs to go through advertising before it comes to council, correct?
It's already did. It's already gone, we've already moved it forward. Monday night's going to be public hearing, first reading, council.
So I'd like to clarify, if we had a proffer that said that a warrant analysis would be done with the initial design of the hospital, and at that time, if it required a traffic signal, the hospital would build it upfront, this like traffic signal?
Whenever it's required.
But if it wasn't required at that time, it would build it within five years.
That's what I really hear, yeah. But Joe just told me that if the town institutes to say that we need it, then you all were due after the figures come in.
Correct.
I was very concerned about that switch where you have control of that light. I've seen that in many places that I've dealt with. So that if you have oncoming coming this way into, you can control that light, and that's extremely important. I don't know what, I don't see that much traffic on the road right now, you stated. But I know in other places where I've worked, it was extremely important. We don't currently have that at any of our signals, but certainly look again. They are being installed. I've seen them.
Yeah, Jeremy, see if you can clean up that language for us so we can get a motion from Monday. Not fast-tracked, the only reason why we're having a meeting tonight on it was to clarify these four, so it's not fast-tracked.
No, moving along. Fast track's not negative.
Yeah.
Fast track is private.
I just heard the fast track.
Yeah, well, people want fast.
All right, moving on to number, thank you, gentlemen, for coming in.
Thank you.
Resolution for the governor for the veto H. Bill 1258. I instructed Doug to put us a resolution together to send, and Doug, if you would like to explain what we're sending to the governor.
Yes, sir. This is a continuation of a resolution that town council passed this past January. Town council in a lot of localities in Virginia passed resolutions opposing House Bill 1258 and Senate Bill 405. These were bills which would have the effect of eliminating most local control over the installation and operation of new wireless communication structures in the replacement of current technology. Basically, what these bills would do would remove most local control over the installation and operation of new wireless structures, eliminating zoning regulation over them. And basically, it would be a statute which mandates that, for all intents and purposes, local wireless companies would be able to take over with very little local control our electric utility poles, and we would basically get no money from it. The General Assembly went ahead and passed this, these two bills anyway, and now it's up for the governor's signature. And so what I'm requesting, if town council is agreeable, that we ask the governor to veto these two bills before they come into law. And both VML and the Virginia Association of Counties is asking also that these bills be vetoed because it would have a very detrimental effect to towns, cities and counties.
Anyone have any objections moving this forward?
I'd like to put it, see it on a regular agenda and not just on.
Yeah, it's going to be on, yeah, council, yeah. Well, yeah, the importance of it, absolutely. I don't know if the governor will see the importance of it, but hopefully he'll read it or somebody will read it to him. Thank you, Doug, for your hard work.
Yes, sir.
All right, next one is going to be the deed of easement from Cornerstone LPL, LPL to the town for water and sewer easements and right-of-way acquisitions for facilities serving Marriott's site. Town attorney.
Yes, sir.
Quickly, please.
Yes, sir. This is a, would be a deed of easement that the town would approve, allowing the town to get a permanent easement for water and sewer lines to serve Marriott. And after we get the water and sewer lines, then we would have the authority to enter into a pilot agreement in order to serve public utilities to Marriott.
This is all standard for, in the corridor, for the lows, and I know we did the car wash, we did all these things, so.
Exactly.
Anybody have any questions?
County's already approved.
Yes, yes. Joe, can you move that forward, please? Council approval?
That can be up this time, right?
If we have another, something else, yeah. Either way, it doesn't make any difference, Joe. It's kind of like, you know, it's important, too. All right, bylaws for the joint towing board, town manager.
Oh, yeah, thank you, mayor. Council approved the, council approved the adoption of the joint towing board with Warren County on November 27th of 2017. However, the bylaws for the joint towing board were not included in the motion, so this is just a little housekeeping, and you just need council next Monday to vote on the bylaws for that they can be included before we can get the joint towing board up and running.
Okay. Any questions? And if anyone knows of a citizen, we need one more citizen to sit on the board, if anybody knows anybody that would like to sit on the board. Let us know. All right, BZA term. Yes, we have a member, Jennifer, can you help me on this BZA term is going from?
We have, yes, we have a vacancy left over, and you did just appoint Ms. Yaker, and we still have a vacancy left over. And we are advertising. We have one or two applicants that you have already interviewed. So if you'd like to continue to interview, which you like.
The person that is not, they're not interested in continuing or is it?
Council did not choose the applicants that you interviewed.
And we have two.
We can continue, you have one.
Yeah, continued advertising, but it's, they haven't met for a couple of months.
It has been about 18 or 19 months.
Yeah, it's been a long time. Yeah, go ahead and advertise, see if we get some more interest.
So we have some time.
Okay.
Which is good. Good news, I think you.
Yeah, there's, yeah, I think so, working good. All right, continued discussion for the 2018-9 tax rate. This is kind of an information tonight. We, and as mayor, maybe have failed to get council to set a tax rate, no matter what it was, last meeting. So this week, we're advertising nine tenths of a cent. Checking with Doug, referring Doug's ability on trying to find some way to take care of these things. He came up with the nine cents, nine tenths of a cent. We've advertised for that, and we'll be bringing it to council for vote on Monday night in public hearing. So we're just going to be repeating last Monday. Everybody good? Council discussion. We have been invited for the fundraising dinner for the Salvation Army. Anyone would like to attend, please let us very low, and that is going to be for April the 6th.
I will send you an email.
You can go ahead, I want to.
Yeah, yes, he's.
Well, what's your update on the bridge? I know you said you got some bids back, any big little promises?
We haven't got the bids back yet, but we did have over half, half a dozen contractors show up. I think the bid date for that bridge is April 6th, maybe. I'm not 100% sure on the date, but we're still waiting for the bids to come in.
What about the revenue sharing? Is that already been approved by VDOT in regards to the bridge or, you know?
Oh, for the bridge, yes. That's already been included, yeah.